Good morning, Stell. Thank you all for joining us today. Today is August 21st, 2023, and we are here in the Laramie Board of County Commissioners Conference Room at our Laramie County Administrative Services Building. And we are here to have a work session on our 2024-2028 Strategic Plan update. I welcome you all. I am the Chair of the Board, Laramie County Commissioner Jody Shabagnali. I'm joined by my colleagues, Laramie County Commissioner John Kofalas and Laramie County Commissioner Kristen Stevens. Also at the table today is our County Manager, Loretta Volker, our Assistant County Manager, Lori Kadrich, our Director of Performance Budget and Strategy, also known as the PBS Guy, and Michelle Byrd from our Public Information Office. So we have a lot to discuss, and I thought I'd just turn it over to you, Josh, unless Loretta, you'd like to kick this off?
Nope. The strategic plan development is Josh's project, and so he's been doing a great job leading us, and we'll let him take all the credit.
All right. Thank you, Josh, and take it away. Thank you.
They get all the blame, too. Hi, everyone. I'm Josh Fudge. Just briefly walking through the agenda today, we'll actually start off with outreach, and our Public Affairs Director, Michelle Byrd, will handle that piece of it. We will then provide an update on some more structure around how the plan could be implemented, and then propose some preliminary high-level goals, and then discuss next steps. So with that, I will turn it over to Michelle Byrd, who will discuss our ongoing outreach efforts.
Thank you, Josh. Again, I am Michelle Byrd. I am the Public Affairs Director here for Laramie County. First thing, we kind of wanted to update you all on the commissioners on is the status of the community survey. We are in the final steps of selecting our survey administrator. I hope to have that done by the end of the month. We've narrowed it down to a few folks. Unfortunately, the folks that we have used in the past are no longer in business, unfortunately, or maybe it's a good thing, right? Everything happens for a reason. Hopefully, they are on a beach somewhere in the tropics. But so we have been talking to some new vendors that we have not used in the past, and one of the things that they have talked to us about is kind of the evolution of how community surveys are being done now. Back way back, you know, 10 years ago when I started, we were still doing surveys by phone. You know, they'd call folks up and do the survey that way. We learned, you know, a few years ago that that wasn't best practice. And now the current best practice is that they actually mail out surveys. So they're going to mail out some surveys to a broad demographic of Laramie County residents, the folks that are living here. The folks have a choice to either fill out that survey or go online and fill out the survey. And then one thing we talked about them as well is historically, or since I've been here, we've had an online version, too, for anyone who wanted to do it. And they said there's absolutely no reason we can't do an online version as well. So our plan is to have that mail-out survey as well as an online version, and we're going to maybe compare the results to see how that turns out. So we're actually excited about kind of these new processes, these new best practices that we're going to have. Projected that the survey will be administered in October and possibly go into early November, but we want it done prior to the holidays. And then we should have the final results before the holiday season, you know, too late into December. So that's where we are in the community survey right now. And then we also wanted to update you all on summit invites and the communication that we've had with them. One thing that we've all talked about numerous times was having a way for the folks that didn't get to attend the summit to give some input. We've been waiting on some of the final results from our vendor to reach out to them and get some input. And once we get that, our plan is to reach out to them and say, hey, this is kind of the results we got. What do you think? Are we missing anything? We kind of wanted to see those results before we structured that questionnaire, but once we get those, we'll be able to do that. And then our plan is also, as we go through, and we have some high-level goals and high-level objectives, to continue to communicate with all of the attendees, the attendees and those that didn't get to participate, where we are in the process. So that is our outreach update as of now. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Michelle, can I just add, one of the things we like about the informal community survey that anyone can go on and fill out is we think we can look at the results along the way and make sure that they match some of the goals and objectives we're coming up with. And then finally, when the results come back after the holidays, we'll be able to really dovetail those and make sure that we've made a good match.
Thank you, Loretta.
I had a quick question. I've been talking about this with my boards and commissions in meetings and kind of keying them up to, hey, it's coming. And I don't know if you mentioned that, are we going to mail it or engage our boards and commissions with this as well?
Absolutely.
Otherwise, I got a bit all excited and waiting to do it, and I was wrong.
No, that was the great part about having the two options, is that anyone can do the online survey, right? And we've done them in the past, and we know folks, especially, you know, our former Laramie County 101 residents, our boards and commissions, we have a good group of people that really know a lot about the county, and we want to engage them as well. So that's kind of the benefit of having both options.
Well, I wanted to just kind of build on that because, you know, I've done a lot of, well, we all have done a lot of outreach, but I'm thinking some of the members from some of the more remote communities that said they've never had commissioners come out and visit, that I have a large list of folks, and I'd love to send that out to them as well.
Absolutely.
Some of our community conversations, there's some of those email lists. I wanted to make sure, you know, specifically theme about Dehosa Valley and some of them because they, you know, haven't really had that outreach, but they're a very engaged community.
Yep.
I would just want to make sure we're theme about some of those lists as well. So that would be great.
We are hoping that you will share the link with your lists as broadly as possible. I think that is exactly the goal.
So I can just send, ask, I know someone else is maintaining that list for me, so I'll just ask.
Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Stevens had her hand up, and then Commissioner Kofalas.
Yeah, so is the point that the vendor that we're hiring, that their survey will be statistically valid?
Absolutely.
So that's why we can't, like, we're not, they'll do those mail-outs and they'll do that outreach.
Yes, correct.
And that'll be statistically valid.
Yes.
Versus the just randomly sending out the, okay.
The online version, yep.
Okay. So we can compare those results and see?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And what percentage do they think they're likely to get back? Do they anticipate any kind of percentage? I mean, is it 25% roughly?
What they give us is kind of the list that says, you know, if we get 600 back, that's going to be a plus-minus discrepancy of 4%. If we get 900 back, it's going to be a plus-minus discrepancy of 3.4. You know, they kind of go up this scale. And one of the great things about the vendors we've been talking to is they do reminders. So they don't just send it out, they'll do follow-up postcards as well, so.
Will it be available in Spanish?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kofalas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Michelle. Two questions. One is regarding how we get the survey out to folks. Will we be using text messaging SMS platform? Because it seems like the younger folks can relate to that. So that's one question, Michelle.
Do you, as of right now, no. That's not one of the ways we've talked about doing it. I can bring that up to the vendors as an option, but we have not discussed that.
Thank you. And yeah, perhaps you could ask them if they think it's a good idea, what the cost might be. And then my second question would be regarding the timing, and maybe we'll get into this as we look at high-level goals and all of that. But I thought that one of the fundamental purposes of the community survey input would be to help inform our next 24-28, 2028 strategic plan, and yet it seems like we won't have the results till the end of the year. But then meanwhile, we're moving forward with at least some high-level goals and objectives. Could someone help me understand the interplay of these two processes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, of course.
One of the values of having the online survey versus the paper survey is that we are going to get some of that, those results back sooner, before the end of the year, so we can see how those are aligning. I know we're going to talk about schedule a little bit later, and some of the things have been pushed out a little bit that I think we're going to align pretty close as well. I don't know if you wanted to elaborate on that, Loretta?
Yes, I'll just do a spoiler alert. We're probably going to adopt these, ask you to adopt these in January instead of December. Because of Proposition HH and the process around the budget, we don't think it's realistic that Josh's team can really put the kind of effort in in December, not knowing how that's going to all come out. So our plan is maybe early January, get these adopted, which will give us time to get the results back, make sure we have the right goals, and then set objectives around those.
Thank you.
Sounds like a great plan, so.
Thank you.
Let's, and just want to make sure, do you, time check, just kind of, I'm just knowing how tightly packed, just let me know if we're, please let me know if we're running tight.
I think you're doing okay.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to the proposed plan structure update, we're starting to put a little more meat on the bones of this, I guess. We would propose that, I guess, if you remember from the last work session on this, we had talked about making our service category directors the executive sponsors and sort of devolving the actual implementation of the plan down more to the staff level. And so we would basically ask them to be those executive sponsors and provide that high-level sort of advice to the goal stewards, and maybe things to look at, how to proceed, things of that nature. So it wouldn't become a big burden on their time and effort. Maybe it's more meant to provide that leadership and stuff like that to the goal stewards. And then having my office, Performance Budget and Strategy, provide the administrative support, reporting structure, and leading the reports to the Board of County Commissioners, I kind of started doing that with the closeout of the current plan. But I would basically be attending a lot of the objective team meetings, meeting with the goal stewards and the service area directors. I think it should be to make sure that the plan is proceeding and if they need any assistance. And so we would kind of hopefully become that one-stop shop for help on the plan. And not just me, but some of the other folks on our team. So it's sort of similar to what we talked about last time, but just starting to provide a little more structure to it. Graphically, so it would look like this on the next slide. Basically, the Board of County Commissioners owns the plan and provides overall guidance. PBS would kind of provide that administrative coordination and support to keep things running. We would then have the service area directors act as the executive sponsors for the four goal buckets that we'll be describing in a little bit, with the goal stewards sort of reporting to really them and to PBS, sort of on a hybrid nature. We would kind of, again, be the administrative piece of that. And then, as in past years or past plans, the objective teams would report up to the goal stewards. So any questions on that?
Commissioner Kofalas.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. I think a quick question, and that is regarding the goal stewards and the objective team participants or members, how will we do that? How will we recruit those folks? Will we be acknowledging that there's a lot of extra work involved? And how can we perhaps incentivize involvement in this work and maybe provide some level of appreciation reward, that sort of thing? Thank you.
Yeah, we're probably going to start recruiting goal stewards and objective teams as we get into the fall, really, especially at our department heads meeting in October. We'll be asking them for feedback on goals and specific objectives, and maybe starting to sell what some of that would be. We also hope to recruit from outside of the county, so it's not just county staff. We've done that a little bit in past plans, but I think our goal is to do that more in this plan, because I think, you know, it's not just the county that's going to help push these things through. We would also, as you'll see on some of the next slides, we'll try to, or we would suggest making the goals maybe a little more broad and aspirational. They've been very specific in the past, like having no bridges rated, you know, structurally unsound. That's obviously a good objective, but as far as a goal, we would like to perhaps have it be a little broader community, and then those objective teams have it be a little more broad participation, so it's not all on county staff. And then we do plan to, in our recruiting efforts, make clear that we will do things to recognize their efforts above and beyond their job duties, things such as extra nectar points, appreciation, maybe lunches and things of that nature. So we do plan to do more of that as well.
Thank you.
Sure. So the next slide has the proposed high-level goals, but this slide is kind of a reminder of the things that either we've already started doing, or especially that past strategic plans have kind of already operationalized. And so this is the reason that these items or these topics may not necessarily be goals or objectives in our new strategic plan, because we're already working on them. And they were things that were identified quite a bit by the leadership summit that we had last month. And so we will, as part of the outreach effort, as we start to refine these down, if there's a thing like, let's say, behavioral health, which a lot of the summit participants noted, we may not include that in our strategic plan because we now have a behavioral health department that's working on those issues. And so, A, you may not, or we may not propose a behavioral health objective or goal. We may, this is all preliminary, but we would also communicate that to folks, too, and say, you know, we heard that behavioral health is a topic that you all felt very strongly should be in this plan. However, we're already working on it, is kind of the short message. So we just wanted you to be aware that some of these issues, again, may or may not be in the plan. Behavioral health is one, broadband is another, childcare, disaster planning and recovery, and data utilization. Again, things that were all brought up at the summit that we would likely see in a community survey results, and which, you know, as we start to refine these goals and specific objectives, we might say, you know, departments are already working on these types of things. Or maybe they can pick them up as something new, not necessarily a strategic plan. So we just wanted to put this out as a reminder or make it clear that if we don't propose behavioral health, it's not because we completely forgot about it or thought it's not important. It's just that, you know, we're kind of already starting to tackle it.
And typically, our strategic plan is really aspirational. It isn't so much tactical. And so these things, new efforts in these areas, if it's a brand-new thing, might be aspirational, it might be strategic, but it's more likely that it will be tactical. And we just need to do a better job telling our story about what we're doing and what our role is in those areas. And that will be an opportunity for us, I think, to do that.
Commissioner Kofalas.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. My question is this, Josh. So for example, with behavioral health, which I recognize, operationalizing and all of that, how would we specifically integrate, I guess it would be an objective, so for example, if we've identified, and we already have, and we're getting more information, the need for higher acuity or inpatient care for children and youth, how would we integrate that into the work that we're doing if we don't necessarily call it out in the strategic plan?
So a couple of ways you could do it. We could list it in the strategic plan. It is different work than what we're doing. It is part of the long-term plan for that area. So you all could make it a commissioner goal for coming year, or you could put it in the strategic plan. It's your plan. What we don't want to do is say, provide services at a crisis center in this different way, a specific way, because we're already doing that work. That feels like an adjustment the department could make.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Josh. I also want to just ask about, when you talk about bringing other partners in for certain goals, will we talk about who those partners are and have a discussion and what their roles are and things like that?
Yeah, we can do that. As we get further along in that structure, we'll provide another update, too.
And then one other question I have is, we have other elected officials in Laramie County, and I know that some of them were at our Community Leaders Summit, and so some of these might cross through their offices. So I'm wondering what kind of communication we have with them going forward about that.
So I'll say that their folks attend the department meetings and the strategic leadership meetings, and so they have staff involved in some of these discussions all along. But we will do, just like the report back to the folks who attended or didn't, weren't able to attend the leader summit, we will report back to them in the same way. And you all have a regular lunch with them. We could even set aside some time to maybe at a future elected official lunch, maybe 10 minutes to do an update on where we are.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Kofalas.
The Chair's question, and the discussion sparked another quick question, and that is, how are we planning to include input from other elected officials? You know, there are 10 of us. And I know in the past, it seems like sometimes folks have felt left out. And so my question is, how would we be including other elected officials appropriately in terms of input so that, so they can inform us, inform the process, and certainly not feel excluded?
You know, I think, as you all talk more and more about this, perhaps we should invite the elected officials themselves to the department head meeting in addition to their staff members, so they do have a chance to weigh in on objectives. And then I can, I meet with them each individually. I can coordinate with them, tell them where we are, what's going on. We can ask them what's missing, send them the same survey link that we may send to others so that we can get all of their feedback in various ways. I think it's easier to look at something, once you have an idea of what it could be, to tell us what's missing. And so that's why I think maybe the elected officials lunch is a good opportunity to have some conversation around that, even before objectives are set.
I'll bring that up today when we have our elected officials lunch. Thanks.
And let me add, please, too, for the community input, in my time out in the community, a lot of organizations, CSU, the chambers, nonprofits, have volunteered to be part of our process as we go forward. And so I don't think it will be difficult to find people who want to work on big issues that I think will be included in the plan. So the question would be, how big do we want the team, and what's the makeup, internal versus external? And those teams will come to you.
And one final point, if I may, you know, if it's not already on your list, Michelle, as far as outreach, I think it would be a good idea to make sure that Colorado State University, ASCSU, and in particular, the current Senate President, Nick DeSalvo, they have talked a lot about, you know, the intersection of the university and the general community. I think they might have some folks who would be interested.
Thank you. Okay, Josh, let's proceed. Just watching the time, just.
Sure. So this chart basically shows the high-level goals that we have come up with thus far, and I would call that top bluish row sort of the goal buckets, if you will, or the goal categories. What we would do is propose four such categories. One would be built environment, which is sort of another word for infrastructure, but when people think of infrastructure, they tend to think of transportation. And so this would be things like intermodal transportation, obviously, development of, you know, different types of buildings and things in our community, utilities and impact fees, things of that nature. The second goal category would be natural environment, and this could have goal areas related to water, environmental protection, things of that nature. Second item, or I'm sorry, the third item is quality of life, and that could include such goals as housing affordability, services for people experiencing homelessness, and nonprofit support and coordination. And then the fourth item is county operations, and so that could include things such as community indicators and performance measures, and safety and security at our facilities and properties. It's important to note that that, the row that goes across all of them, the interest and impacts of underrepresented and underserved populations, we would make every effort to include those in the goals and the objectives underneath them. Our Community Leaders Summit had kind of a special lens towards those issues, and we want to continue that as we develop the goals and the objectives. And the other thing is, while these goals are lifted, are listed sort of in their, under their category columns, it doesn't necessarily mean that those specific areas would only be within, let's say, a natural environment for water issues. There might be something related to water that could be a goal that would be under quality of life, or county operations, or even built environment for that matter. And so we would try to seek to have multiple objectives that would help further these goals where it's appropriate. We don't yet kind of have that listed yet, as we get the report, especially from the consultants. There might be things that transcend these buckets, such as people experiencing homeless, people experiencing homelessness is probably a good one, because certainly how the built environment develops in our community has an impact on the ability of people to afford housing and things of that nature. And so we would try to tie services for people experiencing homelessness into other areas as well. That's sort of confusing, but it's a short way of saying, we don't want to, you know, create these silos that only look at one category area. The goals listed in the bottom three rows are those items that, you know, we heard about and remember from the Community Leaders Summit, and that we've heard, you know, just being in the community elsewhere. It's not meant to be the comprehensive list, there will certainly be others. And it's possible that, you know, one of these may not end up actually being on there, but they're sort of examples for what sort of topics might be within these categories. And one other thing that we would propose is that, while you can imagine which service area director might fit best under which category, is that we're thinking of asking them to pick something different, or even assigning something different. A, to make it interesting to them, since this will be another, you know, duty that they'll have to take on in their workday, but also, you know, to help them spark ideas and have a leadership position, looking at it as someone new who's not, you know, tied to it day-to-day and can ask good questions and things of that nature. So hopefully that all makes sense, and if you have any questions?
So I'll say, too, these are the ideas of the kind of things that might make it into a goal statement. So right now, we're just listing in a bullet list the kind of things that might be included in an aspirational statement around the built environment. There are more, maybe these aren't the words we'll actually use in the end, but it'll be along these lines, we think. And so we're showing it to you this way, because it's really easy to pull out kind of what you heard at the Leadership Summit, but it will be more of a statement at the end with the goals following underneath these that are likely to tie in.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yeah, so, yeah, I like this. I'm glad, it's probably not a comprehensive list, but I think it's a good start. Definitely, you know, with, I like the idea of having the impacts on underrepresented, underserved populations, you know, woven throughout these goal topics. But I also want to make sure that there might be some specific things we want to work on for underrepresented, underserved populations, so that also might be also a bullet point or a line under quality of life, too. And then I do like the idea, actually, of having different leaders that might not necessarily work, do this work, because I do think you're right. It does kind of spark some conversation that might not normally happen. So sometimes you get in your groove and you don't see beyond that, and so I really like that idea. And I also think that there's a lot of intersectionality between some of these topics. So when we think about, you know, environmental protections, I mean, you know, that also works in with the built environment. And I think a lot of, you know, the work that we're talking about land use, the land use work that we talk about, both at the state and local level, you know, that makes a difference on our greenhouse gas emissions and quality of life and all kinds of things. So I do think that, there again, the intersectionality of all these topics makes it so that I think different leaders can be really effective. in some of these spaces where they might not normally play, but would have some great ideas and some great leadership to be able to kind of maybe think outside the box in some of these spaces. So, thank you.
Commissioner Kofalas, and then I'd like to ask a question after yours, please.
Yes. Regarding this chart, what would be the most appropriate and effective way to provide feedback on some of the content here, recognizing this is a draft? But that's one question, you know, in terms of us provide, like, some things sort of jump out at me, but I don't want to really get into it. And I want to make sure that, I agree the intersectionality of all this stuff, but I want to make sure we don't lose sight of agriculture, that that's somewhere. But I guess my question is, what is the most effective way, Josh, Michelle, others, to provide you with feedback on maybe some of this?
So we'll be refining these further in future work sessions with more specifics around what the goals, you know, those aspirational goals in the bottom rows might be at future work sessions. I could also, you know, maybe as we go through this process and get a little more feedback, I could meet one-on-one with you to see, you know, what we're missing from your perspective. In fact, I'll plan to do that, I think.
And if there's anything that jumps out, I would say just write on the slide and let's hand it to Josh, and then we can keep that in mind as we go forward and look at what, we need the notes still from the Leadership Summit. And I know agriculture was one of the issues that did come up. I'm just, we couldn't quite remember the context.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make, I know welfare is brought up, and I want to make sure that is on there because that's something we need to kind of look at with being able to coordinate with all this historic funding coming down and that coordination that's happening. And the other thing, what drummed out at me was nonprofit support and coordination. And so there's a lot of intersectionality, as we've talked about that before, but there's also a lot we're doing. And so I'm wondering what that is. Because today, you know, I live in Behavioral Health Policy Council, which is becoming a part of this board, you know, 2.8 million there. Workforce Development's giving out lots of resources. Office on Aging is going through and supporting nonprofits. So a lot of nonprofit work. And then Regional Opie Abatement Council is now supporting nonprofits. So I'm not sure people know how much the county already does. And I'm wondering, what is that other support? Is it specifically some they're looking for more funding and operational? Or is it just trying for us to coordinate and make sure everyone knows where things doing? Because, and not that, trust me, I would love to support all the nonprofits, but also, we're looking at budget cuts and things. And Office on Aging had a reduction in funding and services, so they've already had to cut back their funding. And I can tell you the need and people asking for behavioral health, the amount of applications was a lot. A lot of that was for funding to support staffing. And so I'm, my mind's kind of turning with this. What does that mean with support and coordination? And what are we looking at? Because we're doing a lot in this space, and I think a lot of folks don't realize, probably up to 5 million or more, I'm just guessing, in nonprofit supports. I'm just curious about that.
That's a great conversation. So I recall at the Leadership Summit that it was funding, that they were concerned about the economy and lack of donations, and might the county support that? This is one of those that we couldn't decide to take off the list or leave on the list. It's a policy-level decision, but we would say much the same thing, that perhaps we cannot afford to support, financially support nonprofits in our community in the way maybe that they're hoping. We think we may learn more from the notes, from the sheets, that they only reported out on a small portion of what they discussed, but we know that those flip charts have other information. So there could be other ways we could provide support. We do offer our rooms at no charge for nonprofits. We have a lot of opportunities like that that we can make available, but we don't know the details. And so without those, it's here for your consideration, like everything else, until we decide that maybe it's not appropriate.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So just to clarify the direction going forward, you're okay with these four sort of categories of goals that will be further refined in the future? Okay. The final slide is the next steps. And so we've received direction on those goal areas and will continue to refine the preliminary goal ideas. Next month, we will make outreach efforts to finalize those goals or at least get close to them and start to develop objectives. Again, we'll continue refining them as we get more feedback on the specific issues. In October, November, then we will work on that. We have department heads meeting on October 13th, which we're going to ask for feedback from the department heads and elected offices to start to refine those objectives. And then in December, January, as Loretta mentioned, we'll look to have final adoption of the strategic plan, depending on the outcome of HH and the budget process, and also create those objective teams and get started. So there are just, there's one other outreach effort during this time, and that's the employee survey. We're going to do kind of a preliminary survey of employees to ask them about their top issues under these four goal buckets that we just described. And then the actual employee survey in November, we'll ask for some further feedback, depending on what the priorities are that we get back. Priorities of what we get back. So that is our update for now.
Quick question, Josh, and maybe you already answered this, but when you talk about the four categories, I also kind of maybe mentioned this and I just wasn't registering, but this also seems to overlap with kind of our climate smart areas, too. So that kind of helps provide that ability for those goals to kind of overlay. Was that, assuming that was intentional?
It is. Heidi is on both teams. Lori Hodges is on this team. And so we're trying to make sure every plan we have that has kind of a big-picture strategic plan is worked into this in some way, in a way that makes sense without having 200 objectives to try to achieve in five years.
Great. I thought so, but I just, I mean, like I said, I thought maybe I had missed that, but it seems like that was intentional. I appreciate that because that will help, too, that we really integrate this, interweave this with all of our work. So I appreciate that. They're great, great work. So colleagues, do you have any other questions before we end today? Commissioner Kofalas.
Now I have to say that over again. Just to say thank you.
No, thank you. I've heard from lots of folks in the community throughout my community conversations and some other things happening. And I've gotten a lot of great feedback from our Community Leaders Summit and just, they felt heard, they felt engaged, they're really excited, and they appreciate the process. So I just wanted to pass that on, that job well done. There's a lot of our community partners who were, really felt valued and very excited about the process. So thank you for that. And Commissioner Stevens, did you have anything you wanted to add? All right, so Josh, anything else? Loretta, anything else?
I just want to say, this is a really strong team. They're really engaged in moving this process forward to develop a strategic plan. And thanks to the entire list of team members, who I will not try to say because I'm sure I will leave someone out. But Josh, Michelle, thank you.
Well, great work and appreciate the update and excited for next steps. Great plan going forward. And so, any other comments? At 11:41, we are adjourned. Have a great rest of your week.